...consultants we've been working with, we appreciate your hard work on the process.
I'm actually gonna pick this up. And let's say good evening Mayor, members of council and to the city manager, members of your team. It has been a pleasure working with Joel and David. And I think it's fortunate to have you as part of your project. Again, Reggie Scales, I'm the CPL, we're architects and engineers and park planners, which is why we're a part of this process. So what I'm gonna do is talk to you about this in general, in a macro level. I'll hire about 2,000 people, and we'll drill down just a bit. Talk a little bit, as Joel said, about the process and what we did. We spent quite a bit of time talking to people, because ultimately you want to do that, to get an idea of what we call beginning with the end in mind. We had three groups, three focus group meetings. That was social or community. We met with economic team, and again, as Joel has shown you before, we also met with an environmental group. Alright, and so those three issue areas really kind of make up some of the drivers for this park, some of the important parts of, again, developing a, ultimately, a plan that is gonna be supported by everyone. So as we look at this, you can see the slide here, adjacent parks and parcels, pretty important, there are six parks, six city parks, over 300 acres that are interconnected with Battle Park. And I do wanna mention it, because it's pretty important, Dorothy Martin's King Junior Park, Smith Tower Park, Rocky Mountain Sports Complex, Sunset Park, Best Friends Dog Park, and City Lane. And so they are all connected here, and as we go through this discussion, you'll see kinda how important it is. US 64, the 87 horse, also critically important. And as I talk to you, I'll talk a little bit about what we found in the focus group meetings. One of the comments, key comments from the economic group was, hey, they mentioned a Whirligay Park in Wilson Northfield, and said, why can't this be a regional park, something where your regionally folks can coalesce or come to? And that has a lot of different... The advantages for Rocky Mountain. The proximity or convenience of US 64. We got a number of different comments in terms of, what do you do here? Do you have, there are really two areas back, how do we take advantage of this? How do we leverage the assets? And the other piece in that, annual migration of chad and bass, and I know you're all familiar with what's happening in around here over the last few weeks, and I was out there, actually out there earlier this afternoon, certainly the fishermen are still there in full force. The trailhead, we looked at some concepts for the trailhead, Ringway Trail, Tar River Paddle Trail, multi-service trail. All of these are existing and they intersect at Battle Park. What you're looking at right there is a concept, there is a design process known as SEPTAD, which integrates the security issues or features into design. And so, again, talking to some of the focus group meetings, you know, the issues with crime, they came up, so we said, in our design, how do we deal with that? How do we get the focus and provide essentially what is a sense of safety as a part of this process as we evolved this park? And so, again, we came up with some concepts and designs, but the convenience of the restroom, informational signage, lighting, all of those things are key parts of the design process. Key features in the park that we looked at or dealt with, the boulders, that was obviously originally a big part of the park as, after when it was established. When it was established in 76, that gazebo and part of that was a big part of the falls. And then the, another area we looked at, native species and historic demonstration areas. Feedback we got from focus groups, people love the park, but they also want to see it opened up such that when you're in the park, you can get some visitors or there's view sheds of the river. And so we balanced that with the environmental, well, how do you do that at the same time, maintain the floor and fauna that's there and without destroying it? And again, the concepts that we've come up with, that stewardship plan certainly isn't in the works, but we've come up with some pretty decent comments or concepts, I think, that will allow folks their interest in ideas to be realized. Final issue here is the economic and business case, the future developments. We've got two bullets there, and actually gonna start with the second one. Economic case for Rocky Mountain. In my travels in the career, I spent about 12 years in the public sector. And one of the things I always looked at is return on investment. If you're placing dollars here, what are you getting out of it in return? What's the best interest of the taxpayers' money? And in recreation, outdoor recreation, you can look at the studies nationwide. People spend more money on outdoor recreation than they do on fuel pharmaceuticals, believe it or not. It is a cash cow for local economies, but it's also important to your economic development, business development, and recruitment. There are a number of things that companies look at when they're looking to locate or relocate. And education, everybody else knows that, recreation, recreation interest, recreation plans are a big part of that as well. So it's a integral part of economic development plans. And then the long-term vision for a Battle Park, as we went through the process, we didn't start at the, at the end, but we started many years ago, back in the early decade, last decade, there was a focus group meeting, and that group spent some time talking about, what are your interests for recreation? Two big things came up. One is definitely education, but the other is active recreation. There's 2015 master plan that's put together. So the Battle Park plan stems from that master plan, all the aims and the interests and the ideals that folks were looking at in 2015. We actually tested those with the focus groups, and what we came out with is fairly direct and fairly focused. So I'm actually gonna stop right there and see if you have any questions or ask Joel to come back.
When you look at parks in our area, the size of our parks in comparison to other parks, I'm interested.
Well, it's never really about size, but it's about what you offer. And again, the reason we spent so much time in focus groups, it is what do you offer? Does it match what your citizens are looking for? Does it match your community and what you need? And so what I will say about Rocky Mountain, and I've been working here on this project for about six months now, I'm amazed that the opportunities, the dynamic, interests, and all the things that are going on here locally, so. But I guess to go to your point, you are where you're supposed to be from a recreation standpoint, because it truly does reflect what the citizens want, but more importantly, you're getting that input in to continue that in the future.
Thank you. Is it Reggie?
Reggie, yes.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple of questions. One, and I don't know whether you will answer them, is there who is responsible for the signage to clarify what is public and private space or access to the river? I've had a couple of questions from folks who've been fishing the river for years and years, and now that the bills are there, there's some areas where people have been used to fishing that are no longer accessible. And I mean, I talked with the mills and they said they were going to erect the signage, because we don't want people to think that some people can fish and other people cannot. So who is gonna be responsible for denoting, you know, where there are areas of public access? And then, once that's done, is our staff responsible for helping to monitor that or facilitate that? Is there any kind of staffing or commission to facilitate the public experience at that point?
We've involved Rocky Mountain mills throughout this process, been in proximity to Battle Park, and we've had conversations, and anything to do with our property, we would be responsible for that signage. And that's part of the importance of the trailhead, to make sure you understand, you know, these are spots that are public access that you can get to. We've also even talked about extending those trailheads to Himmelke Park, you know, to Sunset Park. So the whole trail system has a similar message about, you know, these are points you can fish at, these are your community launches, and these are places that you can get into across the system. As far as a staffing concept for, you know, how to enforce that, we haven't gotten there yet. But like I said, that's part of the process we're looking at as we get into that part of educational, informational signage, to make sure. It's a passive park, so most of the time, you know, staff's not out there. But you wanna make sure that you're still controlling your crowd, taking out as much information as possible. And we've given a good portion of this budget to try to make sure our educational and informational signage is as much as we need.
And I have just two more questions for you to answer. So then for security issues that were mentioned earlier, are we working, I'm sure we are in tandem with the police department about what's appropriate, and is there any kind of patrol that occurs there, or is that just everybody being careful?
We've been, the police department were the first folks we brought in on this, along with Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, just to make sure that we're, you know, crossing our p's and dotting our i's. We got feedback from them over the past several years about any issues at the park. And that park is no different than any other natural park in any other city. You know, areas like that, you know, you wanna make sure you control your line of sight, you know, you wanna make sure you can see through wooded areas, so you try to eliminate spots where people can hide. We've worked with that on the police department. There's been some lower-level discussions about how we control it going forward. Like I said, the discussions are still in the beginning stages, whether or not it's a staff person, or whether or not it's, you know, a blue light system or something like that. We have some of that funding in there to address those issues.
So we're talking about it, planning, and trying to be appropriate in every sense without intruding on other people's rights.
Absolutely, that was one of the highest priorities that we got out of all our meetings, was to make sure that we presented a safe, safe park.
And my last question is concerning the economic benefit. And many years ago, right, I believe, right when the manager first came, we had conversation about opportunity for, for people to have significant interactions that might translate into commerce, you know, whether it be commuting, or I don't know, whatever you do on the water, you know. But wanting to have those opportunities upstream and downstream. In your planning, are you looking for sites along the stretch of the river on both sides of the county line to where there can be opportunity for participation in this economic benefit directly as well as indirectly in the market?
Yes, sir, I think the park plan addresses, part of that 55-mile paddle trail we have allows for access and removal on both sides of the river. Part of these grant funds we could seek would be improved those. And actually, we're trying to, you know, one of the things people like to do is they wanna, they wanna be able to canoe, get out on this side of the dam, you know, carry their canoe over on the other side and get back in to do that. So that's part of the process we're looking at as well, is to make sure you've got access both upstream and downstream.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I have a question following up on Councilmember Blackwell's most recent question.
Sure.
When you asked about opportunities for commercial development, are you speaking out at the edges of, at the perimeter of the park and not on the park itself? We're not, I said we're not talking about leasing out spots within the park for our business?
No, that is not part of the plan. And actually, you know, we've received questions, all the asphalt that we could go put in that park, there's already asphalt there. It would just be replacement of the current trail system that we have, the natural surface trail.
That's a separate question. What I was asking about was business activity, and I suppose, I don't understand, no, I'm trying to be sure that you're not saying there would be spots within that park where a person, a vendor, for instance, could operate a business forefront of it?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And I did have a question with regard to the park, the materials. You said there would be natural materials that would be used in the trails. Is that material something that would be permeable, so that wood would soak into the material and not create a wash?
If we're going to receive the funds for the natural surface trail, basically what you do is you scrape the top a couple inches off, and you get to the hard pack that's already there, you don't put anything on top of it. There are similar trails up in Neetock Mountain and some other parks. But basically, you bring in a crew that knows what they're doing with there, and you work with the slope and the elevation to make sure that runoff does not affect the dam, does not affect the landscape. And basically, if you do it right, you can't even really tell those trails are there until you get on top of them. And that would be our goal, is to make sure we maintain the, you know, environmental, you know, aspect of that park.
Thank you.
I'm going back to commerce. So I am kinda curious to see, you know, how that would develop, so there are still some of the opportunities. You know, what comes to mind to me are outfitters, perhaps some sort of ecotourism, where I'm doing education, I'm flooding down the river, I'm looking at wild meat growth, Tar River clam, or whatever it is that we're going through. You know, how do we encourage that? Because I think that does bring more people to the park, to enjoy it. I think it also is a wonderful draw into the area, certainly complements some of the things that we are doing in terms of sports tourism, those off times or off hours while you're waiting for your kid to have his next game. So has there been any outlay on that, or just recognizing that that could exist?
I mean, they're, they all recognize that it could exist. There's been low-level conversations about typically that's a private company that's doing those types of tours or new launches. From our grant perspective right now, we're trying to make sure that we have all the things needed in place to make that occur.
Right.
But there's not been any large-level conversation about...
Well, so then in follow-up to Councilman Miller's question is, you know, since we're not anticipating that would actually be on park land, is there any kind of licensure or any kind of license, franchise fee, or any kind of registration that you would anticipate for somebody to get involved in, and how are we gonna politicize that? I think that's important.
All right, so let me answer that in a couple ways. Number one, in terms of the commerce, the economic committee, actually all of the focus groups spent some time talking about that very issue. How do we brand? How do we make Battle, Battle Park something that's special? And do you want it to be of a regional destination park? If you know what Pulling Park is in Rock, it's a regional destination. Do you want it to be something like that? If you do want it to be in that area, what is the unique feature that draws? So you use the example in Asheville, alright? They're known as the kind of the mountain biking place nationally, internationally, where you go and put in, because they have the trailheads there. That's one area where you define, where you market, where you brand. So that's the conversation that would need to occur, and that's what the conversations that we had. So what do you want it to be? So what do you want it to be? Do you want to take advantage of the river? Do you want it to be education? Do you want to take advantage of the proximity to highway? So again, these discussions need to occur, alright? So that's the one. But the most important thing, what I usually, what I like to focus on in these discussions goes to economic development, alright? It's about, these investments come back to economic development. When you define that specific area, then you can start to leverage it in other areas. Now, a city of this size, Rocky Mountain, the smokestacks and chasing those, you may get some, but studies have shown very clearly that it is the small businesses, the incubators, the micro, those specific, you know, those smaller businesses, they thrive in areas like this, alright? And again, you go back, what do you need to attract and to create an environment which benefits those businesses? Recreation is a key, a key part of that discussion.
I think we want all of that, which that you just mentioned, and we look for you and our staff to bring something to us, to help us to define what we really want, to make it a regional place to come. And we did mention at one point about Goat Island, Panther Island, and doing the ziplining. I don't know if that's part of your implementation. And the second thing, one of the pier or the outlook deck or whatever, the proper name was taken now, is that gonna be replaced? And then the third thing, as far as this, two more things. The signage for fishing, the city currently owns property across the river adjacent to the mill, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to define what we own and what's private, what's public. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, the protection of the graveyard, I mean, this is their own cemetery, they probably need some more protection. So there's some, some things that I want to mention, but I do wanna hear more about the Panther Island, Panther Island, Goat Island. There used to be a bridge that would connect the Battle Park side to...
They can't hear him. But he's, he is smashing it, he is.
From a perspective of, there were a couple of key points there, I wanna make sure I address most of them. The outlook that was removed, was removed due to some safety issues, construction event. There's nothing in there right now to replace that, basically grant funding and the plant would be replaced. The bridge, you know, we've put a, you know, a visual aid of what something might look like, but now we didn't put figures to that yet, because that's a, that's a long-term goal. That is something that's based on the flood plan, based on a lot of mitigation hazards that we have to go through, numerous to use through some, some various levels of authority to make sure we do that correctly. But they've done some beginning legwork on that, CPL has for us, we've grabbed that information. Panther Island, I prefer to get some more information to you as separate time, I don't really appear to answer any questions on Panther Island, other than the, you know, it came up as part of the property, but most of the grant funding that we have is dedicated towards stuff on this side of Panther Island per se.
So that's the big deal. We've had, and that's why I was a little mystified about the comment about, you know, private activity, because we had committed the whole presentations, where it was all about private commerce, commuting, ziplining, and other opportunities for commerce. And that's why I asked the question related to where will these opportunities be held? What will they look like? Who makes the decisions about what gets installed? And are we saying the only place that commerce can take place is at where the Rocky Mountain Hill location is? So I think that it would be important when we talk about economic case for Rocky Mountain, we take a broad view, as the mayor outlined, as Mayor Potem outlined, about how to incorporate that and still preserve the natural beauty, you know, and the pristine nature of our park. I also do have a question about the history. I think someone asked about history, and there's a lot of history that's taken place there. Are we engaging in conversation with the Tuscaloosa Nation that had the census settlement at that site?
That came up on several, that was a key aspect, you know, wanted to make sure that was preserved out there.
So you've got a question, I mean, I'm asking you, is there any formal plan to have communication with the Tuscaloosa Nation?
Well, Greg and David, these are great writers, I'm just saying, big expert.
Good to have you, David. We will have informational signage throughout the park, not only the Tuscaloosa, the Tuscaloosa predates about 8,000 years, paleo-Indians before them. So we're gonna have signage throughout the park where that is. In 1712, the Tuscaloas were taken up and moved up to state new york. So they're tied to the area of, we've tried to do events with them at the Imperial Center. They have, they no longer have ties to Rocky Mountain or fortune. So that's one thing we have done, and we will continue, we'll make sure that the information is there, that is gonna be part of the plan.
So are you aware that they have many events throughout the state of North Carolina?
The Tuscaloas?
Yeah.
Okay. If you could help us with that information, I'd really appreciate that.
Sure, sure. Their nation throughout the entire state, and perhaps the, you know, after the Trail of Tears and that potential relocation devastation of the nation occurred, while others were settling here, occurred. But there was still, there's still significant populations of Tuscaloas that are in this area and throughout the state. So I think it'd be very important to include their history and their living legacy at their location as well, and we're happy to support.
Thank you.
Question before you leave. Couple of months, well, not a couple of months, maybe six months ago, a citizen had come to me about a Indian burial ground that's near, right behind the tiny homes. And we reached out to one of the representatives of the mill, and then we reached out to the Rocky Mountain telephone to maybe do some stories on how that park was unearthed, and I think a retention pond was put back there. Do we have any knowledge, we couldn't get anyone to really investigate it, but do we have any knowledge of any form of Indian burial grounds? There was little rocks like arrows that were, there's still a couple there, 'cause we walked across the sewer line or out there that was connected to Columbus Street. So I don't know if you have any, you know, if we have any records, and if so, I think we want to preserve that if we could.
We do not know of any specific Indian burial grounds on the property. There's been discussion that there may be some, we have already gotten in touch with the state historic preservation office and worked with them to, we're gonna have quite a few environmental and disforestation cultural regulations when we're working on this. As we begin the actual renovation project, Reggie's team already has an archaeologist on staff, other call, so if we run anything, it's not, we have to go out and find an archaeologist that already has someone, they're based out of Tarboro, but we can stop, see where we are, see what we're doing. But the entire project will, the term Reggie has used before is ziplining upon the land. So we're not looking to do too much unearthing, too much moving of dirt, but we do wanna be very respectful of all the peoples that have been there before us.
Interested, I can show you the location and the person who showed it to me. Are there any other thoughts?
I'm excited about this, because Tar River is a major asset, in my opinion, that Rocky Mountain has not taken advantage of over the years, and I'm excited to hear what you have to say. And it's not all centered around Battle Park necessarily, it can go up and down the river just like Councilman Blackwell indicated, and just because you might be a, such as the mayor alluded to, if you're, if you're, you know, I think about going to the mountains and getting on vans and canoes and then people picking you up down, I mean, that's another way of downstream to bring you back, that's another way. And then I was curious with the, excited about the natural, what did you call it, multi-use trail? How long is that, out of curiosity? Will that help with some of the, maybe the 5Ks, 10Ks that people have, which is also a big boost to the economics of the community?
We've worked with companies before, it's been able to lay out a 5K course that stays in with those confines, and we've been able to handle races, 3.1 miles. Target of Tar was totally on board with it, they were excited about it, as well as some other folks we've talked to about the potential to have some of that talent.
But also, I think, we hit on commerce, but I think it's important that we focus on a company to come through, because not everybody has a canoe or access to a canoe. And so people are gonna need to rent these. And so I think it's important, I just think of my son and his friends, they would love you off of Tar River, they just don't have access to it. So I think it's important, I understand, you know, we've gotta be careful about being equal to everyone, we can't pick and choose, but we, I think we need some sort of commerce, because... because people do need to rent paddles or floats or whatever canoes, because we, we need the kids to go out there and families to go out there, that's important.
That's why I asked about the staffing, you know, plans, because I'm assuming that we would want to make some money too, since we are leading the, you know, right, since we're upkeep, we have to participate in the, we're leading the upkeep.
I thought we did have a couple of canoes. In fact, we've done a Boy Scout trip somewhere along the way, maybe it's been years ago, I don't know.
I went on a Boy Scout, but I went out with.
Can I quote someone?
Ten years ago. Could you speak in reference to where are the points that you can get on the canoe? I mean, it used to be.
Did you pay for it?
Charge, charge or drive.
Rocky Mountain should be extremely proud, we are the steward of the largest paddle trail, the biggest paddle in the state of North Carolina. We manage from Holly Higgy, Aitner's, Ringo, all the way down to Dunbar, going to Tarver. We have ten access sites, Laven's Ferry, Canoe La, Terminal, Halifax Road, Nashville Road at the old art center, Sunset, Battle Park, where we got on the day at Tarver Oaks Park, Runway to Tarver Oaks Park, and then at Wastewater Creek, the plant, to Stormy Creek. So we have all of those, so we do have many accesses, we're extremely blessed, not only because we have a large river in our city, we also have Stormy Creek in our city. So a lot of them are just natural resources that are there, and people enjoy it, that's why Rocky Mountain is here also, this is incredible of our community.
And it's, because I don't hear too much about the canoe program, you know, or activities.
We are not offering to do programs at the, at the moment. We did so, David did that for years, I think as services, we pulled him over to the Imperial Center to run that for a while, now we've got more grants. Like I said, the, that's something we, that this has come up in discussion, we can continue to talk about for the future of the park, about how we can address that moving forward.
I know that Jamila Hawke has said a lot of work over the Tarver area, one of the sites. Are we doing any kind of work historically between town and process?
I mean, we, we've worked with the, what's the trail? Sound Rivers, which basically takes the river from the part that crosses in North Carolina and uses it out, on toward Tarver and Greenville, try to make sure our signage is up to date, stays, you know, our mileage markers stay on point. That's the extent of the cooperation we work with right now, but we have those lines of communication to be able to reach out to them.
Okay. Thank you. So, City Manager, I guess our direction today is just to hear the presentation, or you want us to, three things I heard, the economic opportunities, both private and public, preserving the Native American history and burial grounds, and preserving the natural areas. Did I leave out something, Councilmember? And that economic opportunity, this with canoe, zip lining and.
Private areas and Goat Island and Panther Island. Yes, sir. So our intention today was to present information, things that you have pointed out, we will include in the plan that we bring back to you for your consideration and adoption at the next meeting.
Mister, I'm, Joe, a lot before we had a chance to get real, but I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you, very important to all of us as a city, our history, but more important, I think, our future. So thank you for your good work.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have our Main Street Economic Development Incentive or its sewer services, Brad Carr.
Actually, that's.
Elton Day, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Portem, Mayor, City Manager, members of council, thank you for having me here today. What you have before you is a request from the staff to amend policy number 10, 129, which is basically, in short, economic incentive to provide assistance to people development along Main Street. If you have any questions, I'll be more willing to try to address those at this time. It's specifically to address water and sewer tanks.
Councilmember.
What is the justification for that?
Oh, to try. Go ahead.
To try to increase development activity along Main Street, specifically directed toward mixed-use development.
Well, I've been a downtown developer for many years, I just, the concern has always been expressed that we're not adversely affected, there's, there's, we're not the areas, but we're not in special treatment for downtown. But I just wanted, we needed to have our case fairly well.
Well, may, may I jump in on that? I think that the, the condition that the downtown is, certainly it has been approved,
And if we want to get down to the nuts and bolts about what we have and what we don't have, and if we need go ahead and say it, then we can do that then, and we can just move forward with this.
And, and Mister Mayor Portem, I'd also like to say, every time something has occurred, it's been economically beneficial for all of us, you know, the streetscape brought in a lot of, a lot of infusion of money, but also interest and attention. I think about the park that our council, I'm pulling a really big, you know, that doesn't smart downtown, which was private investment, depression was seen about what happens to happen. Every time we made investment, we got money back. So I think it's a good question you're asking, Councilmember Drudge, about what's the return? So let's document that. When we met Center Canyon, they had not been the COVID, we'd been in the middle of a big season, I believe. But we've seen sales revenue, sales tax revenues increase, we've seen investment increase downtown, we've seen people working downtown that never worked before, and if you're in any corner on Saturdays, you know, folks are down, we got art center downtown, it's exciting about what's happening. But I'm saying, I agree, I think we're all saying the same thing, let's do more. So, you know, we only have one downtown, is all we're saying, we got one downtown, and what every economic developer says across the world is that downtown is your living ground. And it doesn't matter what edges look like or what the periphery looks like, if you're poor, it's not presentable, then that's people's takeaway of your city. And I'm proud that we have had a developing, beautiful downtown, buildings, they are not buildings all over Rocky Mountain, we built in 1891, 1911. This is the only place in our city with a concentration of history like that, where you can physically see the hands of generations over time in building a future of the present. So I, I fully support this, and I don't, I guess we can't vote on it here, is everybody voting, they come up with a session.
That's true.
So I, I just again want to say kudos to you, thanks for discovering new ways to do this investment strategically, to get the vision of our city that we live in.
Yeah, so to your point, Councilman Blackwell, you were talking about economic impact, when you're dealing with things like this for user fees, once we get this in place, if council decides to do that, you're going to have a meaningful return on your investment because we'll have the users down there.
I agree with the mayor, I think we need a master plan, I, I feel as if we're, again, and I'm repeating myself, peacemilling things in here, I think we need a master plan of, of the incentives that we give, and if, if other communities are doing stuff, doing more than we are, doing less than we are, I think we need to know that. And then coming here and presenting at one time, either going gamebusters, what we're doing now for peacemilling everything, keep on coming to the table and saying, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, and at some point, we don't know the impact it's going to have on, on this community, you know, we don't actually own our budget. I mean, I'd ask the question of, and I hope you can come back and say, this is going to be the worst-case scenario, so to speak, if everybody takes advantage of it, it's going to cost the city X, because it's going to be an expense to the tax base, and someone's going to have to pay for it, and it's going to be the tax base.
And it's a return to the tax.
I didn't say it wasn't a return, I said it's going to cost. And just like, and just like when a business comes here, whether it's got a partnership or the state brings in a company to come here, it's economic development. I think everyone gets that, and I think we need to know what the cost is.
Of course, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, could I, to put this on the agenda?
Sure. The motion was made by Councilman Blackwell, second by Councilmember Droner, all in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye.
Discussion, please, discussion.
We just had a discussion, do you have a?
No, nobody's wrong with question, I'm just asking, my one more question, would the board to move it to a vote?
Okay, you can do that, without, excuse me. Councilmember Miller.
When the information is.
Councilmember Miller.
Please show it.
Councilmember, Council, Councilmember Miller, I would recognize you to speak. Okay, let's get some order here. Would you like to speak on the motion on the floor?
Speaking to the discussion with regard to requesting this information be brought forward, the request is simply, when you're sending this information in terms of the money invested, that I think we said it in terms of a percentage of our tax base or tax value, not just like a worthless number out there. When you're talking about other cities, given those a percentage of their total investment there.
Thank you. Thank you, part taken. All in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye, aye, goes next. You can show a hand. Well, we, well, let's put it on the agenda, we got to vote for it anyway, so.
Yeah. Put it on there.
The motion.
The motion was to place the Main Street Economic Development Incentive Water and Sewer Services proposal on the agenda at the next council meeting.
Right, in the past, right?
Thank you. I, I do want to make a comment about peacemilling, but I'll, I'll make that at the next meeting, because it's not me in peacemilling. Thank you. Is it on that?
No. I would like to say that we did have a retreat, and I would like to ask the City Manager's staff at some appropriate time, that we still need, as the City Council's staff, come together, and some of those agenda items that we wanted to go over, we still need to come together and do that, at some appropriate time. Hopefully, we can do that.
And just for the council, FYI, I'll be working with the City Manager to bring those topics of interest, so that was on the council retreat to bring forth to us for further discussion. At this time, we're going to have the draft of Heritage Pedestrian Trail conceptual plan, Brad Carr.
Thank you, good evening. All right, you're here, okay. So just, this is the draft of Heritage Pedestrian Plan, we need a little bit of guidance on this. Just real quick, I want to go through this from the council members who weren't here for the wayfinding plan, quick review of the original wayfinding plan that was adopted. So the original wayfinding plan, composed five districts, downtown district, Mills district, Gateway district, opposed district on the south, and then another district on the north to be named later, committed a new district in 1964, and brought a vote on. As part of that wayfinding plan, the proposal was to connect downtown with the district to the north to be named through a heritage trail connection, to kind of celebrate the last amount of history that was occurred in this area. So the, the district plan itself hasn't been named, but this working group that we're proposing, work with, would help develop for that proposed district to the north. And that, that district to the north includes, goes from Douglas Block, MLK Park, St. Thomas Park, we'll get into that detail in a little bit. Just a quick review of the signage, maybe all the same building downtown. The part that we haven't put up yet is the pedestrian kiosks, and this plan is to try to follow, and I'll give some of those kiosks building. Five of those were included in the original downtown master plan, we haven't installed yet. Again, parking and the other signs you've seen up there downtown. So if there are any questions on the master plan, kind of dive into this draft, pedestrian heritage trail plan.
I just have a question on the construction of the sign. Why is it not painted black, or why is it just raw steel?
That is a very standard type, so you don't have to maintain it, it rust naturally to the surface rust, and then it doesn't ever have to be painted or maintained again, it's very common technique.
Doesn't degrade the?
No, it forms the surface rust, protects the rest of the steel, I would say like that, you've seen some power poles laying downtown over Falls Road, you see them, they rusted it, they're good.
Okay, that was just an internal observation.
Okay. All right, so there are a series of five signs downtown, and this, this plan kind of locates those with various different themes, that we'll propose it, and then, so those five signs are this one at Atlantic Gold Leaf and Albor, Gold Leaf and Main Street, Douglas Block, one at Five Points, and one at Main Street. And you'll see various suggestions for what that content would be. What I would point out is, these signs right here, that sign content can be changed out over time, but we want to have an idea that the themes are right, so that we can put those signs in the right location. And then if we want to, with a. And then, if we want to in the future change them out, we can change the content without changing the sign. The next part of the phase, which is, we want to get the citizens advisory group together to flesh out the details, but is the, what we're calling the Heritage Trail. And it starts probably up in this area, with the area that we're calling Professional Road. And then you see some landmark buildings from downtown in this area, going down Alborel Avenue, which we found as a rural downtown Alborel discussion downtown, that that was a very prominent location for African American community. And we have Mitchell House in the middle of that block, and we have Buck Leonard's House at Discoc intersection. You have the marker, two historical markers for this sanitation strike and the MLK speaker. And then we have a series of what we call interpretive signs, and that's these bigger signs that you kind of see in parks, the large 1 by 8 signs, that are proposing announced through here, and then on another one in MLK Park. Again, this is just a draft plan to give the folks, the working committee, something to work with on developing content. The one thing that we do, we propose that you get your guidance on, is moving forward with installation of the Alexander Evans interpretive sign. You have a mock up graph of your content, which you can feel what it looks like. That Alexander Evans sign at the sidewalk along Spruce Street from Atlantic Avenue tying into the St. Talbot Park, just to tie in with the dedications of the Alexander Evans complex signs that will be dedicated in the future. And that's kind of really the gist of the plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, looking for a little bit of guidance on if we're on the right path with this, and giving some information for seeing if those two, structure of those two elements that you set aside.
Any questions of council members? I know, Councilman Blackwell, you hit the concerns, all their address at this. Yes, their address is listed. Thank you.
Actually, I think it's great, but at some point, and maybe I'm ignorant to it, do we have it on our website, a very interactive website? Or do we have, or is there plans to maybe put some sort of, with everything that we're doing within the city, some sort of app or something that, we have visitors coming to the event center, we have people coming to the ball fields, you know, most people are in vehicles, and it's gonna be hard to see, you know, a lot of the history and so forth that goes along with it. So, I would encourage at some point, not now, really making a very interactive website and/or app that goes along with that, and I think we would utilize more than just the signs alone that you actually have to be valuable.
That sounds like a great idea. What do we develop that? I'm sure there's technology in place for scanning the bar scan and all that kind of stuff, so. Depends on career.
Yeah, actually, we are investigating that now. Kiosk, in particular, that we saw at NLC, may end up in City Hall, we'll just see. But we are investigating that, and not only for the City Hall, but also for the event center, the business services center, and some of those areas that are frequenting a lot by the public.
Thank you. At this time, we have a review of the third quarter fiscal year 2020 report, revenue expenditures, kind of honor, come. Let's be reminded of time, 6:21, council meeting at 7:00. And then we have a closed session as well. If we don't get to that, we're connected.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon to everybody. I'll do my best to make this quick and informative. We are now completed with the third quarter. Obviously, under normal circumstances, the report that I would provide would be a little different, but obviously, the COVID-19 event has had a significant impact on us, not only in terms of operations, not only in terms of lives, but also, of course, economic issues. And those do play a role. They don't show their head with this much in the third quarter, because the third quarter ends in March, and some of the revenues that would be impacted in the month of March, which is when we started seeing slowdown and shutdown in the economy, primarily due to area taxes, sales tax, we will not see until the fourth quarter due to delays in collection. But overall, I just want to show you a review of where we are with respect to revenues and expenditures. Talk a little bit about how we're going to be doing our best to evaluate our performance ongoing, to make sure that the, even if, even when we present you our balanced budget plan for fiscal year 2021, to also make sure that we're operating in a balanced fashion with respect to revenues and expenditures. Talk a little bit about the end of year projections for the general fund, and again, these are projections based on what we think is gonna happen in the final quarter of this year, and these are projections that we've already taken action on with respect to budget reductions in the current year, as well as also provide an employment update. And again, this information, the employment update, will also be reflective of where we were in February of this year, which was prior to the employment impacts that were occurred due to COVID. With respect to the third quarter, as you can see, and you had a chance looking at your report, you chose in the presentation, we can tell, we continued through the first nine months of this year to see growth in both Advolorum and sales tax revenues. And we were definitely doing very well in those areas. Obviously, that circumstance has changed with respect to sales tax. We're fortunate with respect to Advolorum, of course, being collected on real property in the second quarter of the year, that's pretty much taken care of. So, that's not as big of a concern in terms of looking at the latter part of this current fiscal year. We also saw that our revenue growth did outpace our spending growth to the third quarter. So, we are seeing greater collections, and we are doing our best to maintain limited growth of expenditures. Obviously, we do have some growth in certain areas. What we did have to do, and you'll see it in the upcoming slide, is we did have to make some significant budget reductions, and we took those to effect at the beginning of the fourth quarter, so in early April, those were implemented, and they constituted a little almost $3 million of reductions that we made to account in the general fund, along with reductions in other funds, to make sure that we finish this year in a balanced fashion. And we, because of that, do not anticipate using any of the $1.5 million of adopted appropriated fund balance. So, that will return to fund balance at the end of this year. With respect to the utilities, prior to the start of the third quarter, electric sales were a little ahead of budgeted projections. They're now a little bit behind, but not significantly. Gas is also behind, because we, of course, had a moderate winter, which does affect gas. However, the good news is, is that the wholesale cost for both of those utilities have also been down, particularly with respect to natural gas, so it's not affected our margins significantly. The expenditure activity is also reduced, that's the prime factor in reducing our expenditure activity in both funds. On the water and sewer side, water sales have been close to our budgeted projections, and have remained so through the course of the year. We continue to see, we're down, we continue to have a down year in sewer sales, due mainly to a dry weather, which affects our, some of our resale customers, other jurisdictions, the funds that we receive because of air pollution infiltration, that's not happening. And also, some key customer usage reductions that we have noticed. However, the operating expenditures have been in line with these reductions. We do, however, have some significant expenditures, as you'll note, on the capital side of both water and sewer, and those were planned, and there was a planned use and appropriation of available reserves to cover those expenses in both water and sewer. I want to talk a little bit now with respect to operating ratios, and this is a very simple equation, total, it's basically looking at total revenues and dividing it by total expenditures. And really, if you're at one, you're in balance, and obviously, one is where you want to finish out. And the reason why, the reason why we're kind of looking at it a little, in a timeline fashion, is because the, there is a difference in the timing with respect to revenues and expenditures. I know this happens in business, as well as it happens in government, and the main driver of that timeline difference is the property tax. Property tax is over 22, 20, or almost $25 million total, and a lot of that's collected in the second quarter. So, the first quarter, you don't see our any property tax collections. You see most of your property taxes in the second quarter, and it trails, and it lets off, not much in the third, hardly any in the fourth. And so, as a result, your expenditures, obviously, are more consistent throughout the course of the year, particularly salaries and benefits. As we're moving forward, we need to do our best to make sure that as we perform in our budget, that the actual performance during the fiscal year, that we're hitting these operating ratio targets, so that we make sure that we're gonna finish out the year in as close to a balanced fashion as possible. Because what we don't want to do is finish, is come into the end of the fiscal year looking like we have to make major reductions and not be able to do it, obviously, because you don't have the accounting capacity to make those budget reductions. We were very fortunate, because as you can see here, at the end of this current third quarter, we finished in line with respect to our margin. Our target was 1.11, we actually had a target, we actually completed a little over 1.12. That put us in a position to be able, that we knew that we had the flexibility within the budget, even in the final quarter of the year, to be able to make the necessary budget reductions. And that's very important. That's a very important position to be in. Obviously, we want to finish the fourth quarter this year and next year, and every year, with a ratio of one, which indicates that we're not using fund balance, that we are managing our budget in an effective manner. We do use, we do use fund balance to budget, to balance the budget from a planning perspective, and if an absolute catastrophe does occur, to be able to have that flexibility. But our goal throughout the course of the year is to find savings and other, and potentially growth in revenue to do that. That becomes a little bit more difficult as we move toward in this COVID situation. Looking at our projections, and I apologize because the presentation, the way it's shown up on the screen, it hides a little bit, but y'all have had a chance to see the information. When we started out the fiscal year, when we started, when we were coming into the end of the third quarter, we were potentially looking at having a situation where our revenues were gonna exceed projections by over $900,000. So, we were gonna have a very good fiscal year, and then COVID happened. And as a result of COVID, particularly with its impact on sales tax, impact on some other forms of taxes, the impact it's gonna have on the interest return on investments, a similar reduction in interest rates from what we saw during the 2008, 2009 recession, and of course, the long-term continuance of that is another concern, as well as the impact that it has on our programs and services, including the operations of park facilities and other programs that we have, we're looking at a deficit, I mean, a shortfall in revenues of about $2.6 million. And we have, we have reduced our budget a little bit more than that, to potentially offset to be prepared for the fact that our revenues could decrease even more. This does not take into consideration any stabilization coming from any source. We simply cannot plan for that at this point. We know that there's discussions of that, but we cannot plan for that at this point. Take this opportunity now to talk about a little bit with respect to employment. This information, again, is in February, and what February will do now is kind of serve as a benchmark for the pre-COVID points. There was obviously no impact of COVID in February, in February's numbers. We saw some, we'll see some impact in March, and obviously, a significant impact in April. But as you can see here, employment had picked up in the month of February compared to the month of January, based on the yellow bars and how they compare to the, for the yellow bar to the right in those chart tables, how it compares to the immediate one to the left. But they were slightly down for the year, if compared, look year to year. One-year change in employment, as you can see here, looking at other metropolitan areas, we were slightly down at that point. These numbers had been revised by the state, starting in January, and had to revise backwards a little bit. Looking at the total, their employment base, looking at from the standpoint of the sector, and we showed this information last quarter, and again, it just bears repeating, about 43,500 jobs in service sector jobs in Rocky Mountain, about 12,600 are goods-producing jobs. That's for the metropolitan area. This information is not available on a city basis. So, we are obviously going to be watching very carefully the impact that this whole situation has, not only on the overall jobs front, but on the jobs front with respect to each sector. Some sectors, as you know, are more susceptible to potential decline than others, depending on the impact that we're expecting. We also share this information about average wages by sector. For the most part, there was not significant change across most sectors comparing the third quarter of 2019 compared to the second quarter, which is what we provided before. Overall, the workforce average in 1924, 1924 dollars and 24 cents an hour actually went up a few cents. So, to conclude, I believe that with the actions that have been taken by our staff, that the actions and the leadership of the city manager that have been taken by our staff, that we are prepared to handle the impact of COVID-19 and its impact on our budget from the standpoint of revenues, that we're prepared to handle that in the current fiscal year. Next fiscal year will have to be a very difficult year, and as we continue to work with budget, which y'all will receive in a couple of weeks. We are starting with a conservative outlook. We're only considering those revenues that we're absolutely certain that we're going to receive, and not anticipating, not feeling any anticipation of any additional revenues. However, we do anticipate it to be a fluid situation. We don't know what the recovery's gonna look like. You probably, of course, obviously, have to get the information in the news about different models and different concepts. What we want to do is be prepared to adjust as the recovery adjusts. And so, there will likely be a need, hopefully, this is our hope, we hope that this happens, that the recovery improves in a solid fashion, improves better, and allows us then to anticipate bringing to you amendments to increase appropriations as the situation improves, particularly with respect to profit, I mean, with respect to sales tax.
All right, thank you, city manager.
Now, sir, at the end, concludes the report.
Any comments from council members of this town? If not, thank you. At this time, we're going to, we have a closed session for economic development.
Councilman Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walther.
Here.
Dontrich.
Here.
Ullman.
Here.
And Neller. Ms. Neller.
Councilman, Councilman Miller, can you hear us? All right, so, yeah. But then, we'll move on to item number four on our agenda, that's the approval of amendments for the regular scheduled city council meeting, which is held April 27, 2020, recessed and reconvened on May 1, 2020. Pregnant action is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a deeper discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a high sign. Motion passes. Moves us to item number five, which is the community update by our city manager, Rochelle D. Smallton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council and the public. First, I am very pleased to announce the hiring of Mrs. Kena Cofield-Jones. She has been hired to serve as our human resources director for the city of Rocky Mountain, effective today. Mrs. Jones is a consummate professional and has over 30 years of experience in human resources management. She has a breadth of knowledge in all aspects of human resources, including paying classification, benefits administration, employee relations, workers' compensation and safety, as well as employee development and recruitment. Recently, she served as a member of the executive leadership team for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health, where she led, mentored, coached, and developed the human resources team. And I'd like to just underscore that that is why it's taken her so long to move from that position here to this position in Rocky Mountain, given the COVID-19 pandemic. Mrs. Jones has held numerous human resources positions with the federal government, Department of Human Resources, and local government is not new to her. She has over 18 years of experience with the city of Richmond, Virginia. While there, Kena served as the city manager's chief of staff, human resources director, and held several other human resources position, positions. She holds a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of the District of Columbia, and a bachelor's degree in business administration from Virginia State University. So, I will pause now and ask Mrs. Jones to please stand and be recognized. I'm not sure if you'd want to address the council.
We'd like to be here.
Starting June 1st, applications for the residential facade improvement grant program will be accepted. The program administered through the Human Relations Department will offer eligible homeowners in designated areas of the city the opportunity to beautify residential property facades. The program provides for a grant of up to $5,000, and managing funds are not required. Contact the Human Relations Department at 252-972-1181, or visit rockymountnc.gov to find the list of eligibility standards and obtain an application. Again, if you have not already done so, I encourage you to fill out and send in your 2020 census form. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. If you have questions, you can contact one of the city census outreach members at 252-972-1181, or. or visit 2020census.gov. While the governor has lifted some restrictions during this pandemic, I would like to remind you to do as his executive order states, if you can, stay home. Please know that the City of Rocky Mountain, that officials and staff are working to ensure you continue to receive excellent municipal services. As some businesses begin to reopen, the city's Water Resources Department is encouraging building owners and managers to follow the advice of the American Water Works Association, and encourages commercial customers to flush their building's water system before reopening to the public. The shutting down of many commercial, commercial buildings across the city due to the coronavirus pandemic may have resulted in low or no water running through building pipes for an extended period. This may cause discolored water, or lower chloramine residual disinfectant, which could cause harmful microorganisms to proliferate. The stagnant water should therefore be flushed out as fresh water is drawn into the system. Per the city council's direction, the moratorium on all utility disconnections will continue until further notice, and lay fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are in need of help with your bill, please contact the Business Service Center. Also, all commission and board meetings will continue to be canceled, as well as neighborhood meetings, Citizen Academy, and the Rocky Mountain Area Council meetings. Stay informed, please, of all of the lasting information regarding our city. I encourage you to visit our website at rockymountnc.gov, or contact us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Any questions for the manager? Okay, let's move on to item number six, which are presentations and recognitions. So I have a proclamation to read, and then I'll walk you in, we'll do the presentation. Proclamation of the City of Rocky Mountain, whereas the President and Congress of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Rocky Mountain Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of residents and visitors to the City of Rocky Mountain, and these officers, past and present, have by their faith and loyal devotion to their responsibilities rendered dedicated service to our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems and duties and responsibilities of law enforcement agencies, it is equally important that members of those agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by preserving life and property, by protecting citizens from violence or disorder, and by safeguarding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. The men and women of the Rocky Mountain Police Department enjoy and, enjoy a long and distinguished record of service to the City of Rocky Mountain, have unceasingly provided vital public service, and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And whereas we must not forget, those who have fallen in the line of duty, these officers know that they may face danger every day, that unfortunately, some have paid for protection of others with their lives. Their sacrifice is along with those who have suffered severe injuries, must not police officer Allen Christopher Silver, who lost his life in the line of duty on May 2nd, 2007, and senior police officer Christopher Driver, who lost his life in the line of duty on June 23rd, 2018. Now therefore, I see Saunders Robinson, Jr., Mayor of the City of Rocky Mountain, to hereby proclaim, May 10th through May 16th, 2020, as Police Week, and May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Rocky Mountain. I present this to Chief Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, please.
Chief, before you leave, what I would just like to say is that I don't know if I were a city, a city council member in some of the other cities around the country, if I'd be as proud of our force as I am of the Rocky Mountain Police Department, and especially in very tumultuous times, when you've seen people who have been commissioned and signed up to serve to protect the public become predators and enemies of the people, and they were hired to serve. And what I appreciate is that we have a police force in Rocky Mountain that has a reputation for protecting and serving everyone, and also honor and skill. I've witnessed myself firsthand, Madam Manager, opportunities when people could have taken, officers could have taken a liberty and done some damage for them. And I've seen some times when it could have been justified, but because of the training and the temperament that the leadership has encouraged, I've seen good decisions made and good outcomes occur. I also want to thank Madam Manager, Chief Robinson, I appealed to him in particular about two, three months ago, some kids in my neighborhood came to my house with broken bicycles and wanted me to help them fix it, and everybody knows I'm not a handyman. But I'm thankful they came to me, I called the chief, and he and several officers, the very next day, brought brand-new bicycles for three kids in my neighborhood. And that wasn't done for me, it was done for them. And that's the kind of police force that we have in Rocky Mountain, that's not an unusual thing, that's just standard, par for the course, and that happens with good leadership, Madam Manager, and good training and good efforts, and I want to thank them, well deserved.
Thank you, Chief. Let's move on to item number seven, petitions from the public. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner, you have a floor.
I have one, you. I have a floor.
Yes, sir, you have a floor. No, sir, we have your information, shows us your little South Washington street, you have a floor for making a petition, and you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
I thought the little club, we need, I don't need.
Do the best you can, please, Mr. Turner.
I, I had a question to, 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 uh, a new lady, a new lady, uh, uh, can't, you know, to go on the property. She, uh, she had a home, a home, she had, uh, um, and so, I think maybe with her, to, 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 possibly with a grant, to get a house on, on the, on the, uh, a house on the, uh, and, uh, I hope I, not, not, to, to, on the mountain. So, uh, if you knew to get a house, not, uh, on the, uh, street, which we, we, the court, I would need some, a car, and, we, I would feel, if you could do something, uh, we, uh, we had, um, a home, if you, we could, if you, to, 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 to.
Well, Mr. Turner, I can ask if staff, if they could talk to you with the grant programs that we do have available for the City of Rocky Mountain, and perhaps you can talk with you and understand better what you're trying to achieve, and see what we can work with you with, to whatever degree that might be allowed. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. Item number eight for the evening is the consent agenda. Item A is consideration of recommendation for the approval award of the duty sidearm to Corporal Darius Hudson, who's spent 30 years of dedicated service with the Rocky Mountain Police Department. Retirement date is May 1st, 2020. Item B on the consent agenda is consideration of the fiscal year 2020 Project Ordinance Amendment, increasing appropriations of the occupancy tax fund, which covers transfer of the general fund appropriated for this year 2020, adopted annual operating budget of $500,000. And then item, that's it. I'm sorry, you said so much more. With that said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Submitted by Councilman Blackwell, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on item eight? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, is consideration request to apply for 2020 Patrick Lady Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, formerly known as Bulletproof Vest Grant. $19,488 will provide funding for replacement of 32 vests, is a 50% local match required, which is $9,744. The recommended action is authorize staff to submit application on behalf of the city, and two, to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute any required documentation, certifications, and subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Councilman Daultred, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on item nine?
I guess my only discussion really is 32, that is not a complete waste force, I'm sure they all have, well, pretty best, but I guess are they all up to par and up to standard, and if not, then they certainly should say about doing something about that.
No, they, they certainly aren't up to standard.
Great, it's good to hear.
Okay, any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 on our agenda tonight is consideration request to apply to fire department assistance for firefighters' grant COVID-19 supplemental, at $63,535 for critical personal protective equipment supplies, a local match is required for $6,353.50. Recommended action is authorize the staff to submit an application on behalf of the city, and second, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentation, certifications, and subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city.
Move, second.
Motion made by Councilman Knight, second by Councilman Daultred. Is there a need for discussion on item 10? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion 10 carries. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of the fiscal year 2020 installment financing contract with US Van Corp. Government Leasing and Financing Need for Equipment, for $1,479,000 with a fixed interest rate of 1.58% for a 36-month term, and with that, $1,508,000 fixed interest rate of 1.793% for a 59-month term, at a total cost of $2,987,000. We have a breakdown here, is there's perhaps, Mr. Hunter, you want to walk us through what these items are, very briefly, for you have.
Of $2,987,000. We have a breakdown here, is there's perhaps, Mr. Hunter, you want to walk us through what these items are, very briefly, for you have.
In this period, the next five years, approximately $49.3 million, most of that being in the utilities, there is some need in the general government, but primarily that is in the utilities. Approximately $35.6 million coming from the enterprise funds, and approximately $20.95 million coming from the general fund. We'll also see there the recognition of our power bill allocation over the next five years, and we recognize the power bill allocation could be subject to change due to the impact of COVID on the revenue sources related to the power bill. So that is something, obviously, that we'll have to evaluate, and it's a little bit of a challenge, because that information is typically not provided until next fall. So we're a little, we'll have to be a little careful in terms of where we anticipate power bill to be. We also do allocate some fund balance and reserves set aside for these purposes, predominantly in surface transportation and in the utilities. We'll also see almost $9 million in state grants, that is primarily allocated to transit and to surface transportation, as well as a little bit of federal grant money. The $4 million in vehicle permit fees, that is allocated all to surface transportation and is all used for resurfacing. That is, of course, a share, that's 80%, that's a $25 fee that is paid by the people for regi, for annual registration. And of course, you see the other resources that are listed there as well. Over the next five years, our largest area of expenditure is in, in general government, is in surface transportation of approximately $27.7 million. And again, that, that, that is where we spend a lot, tremendous amount of money, and we account for all of the surface transportation power bill allocations into the CIP. Approximately $13.8 for facilities, $7.3 million in fire, $6.9 in parks and recreation, and a little, a little, about $4.9 million in police, as well as, you see transit, IT and communications, public works, and also the ongoing maintenance of the Douglas Block, which is also considered our CIP, and that's over a five-year period. With respect to the coming fiscal year, we are anticipating in the enterprise fund revenues of approximately $7.5 million coming from the enterprise funds, approximately $7 million in installment debt, most of that is in the utilities, and a lot of that's tied to the, the two major electric projects that we have scheduled for fiscal year 21. Approximately $2.9 million from the general fund, as well as $2.4 million use of fund balance, and that is for some very specific projects that I'll talk about in a little bit. Also, as you can see, the allocation of power bill, 1.8, we recognize that that number may be adjusted to reflect a different number depending on the circumstances that occur. We hope that we'll know more as we're going to, as we present the budget to you. With respect to the expenditures in fiscal year 2021, we are hoping that the surface transportation, we're hoping to be able to budget approximately $4.656 million. That includes resurfacing, of course, other transportation system improvements. We're looking at approximately $2.1 million in facilities, about a million dollars in transit, and that covers all the major transit grants, including acquisition of vehicles for our rural system, as well as the maintenance of as well as the maintenance of our of our inter, of our intra-city transit system. Uh looking about seven hundred thousand right in communications, five hundred fifty thousand dollars in parks and recreation, four hundred twenty thousand in public works. And then, as you can see, these numbers do reflect some actions that we have already taken with respect to the capital budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one as we anticipate significant uh stress uh as we go into next fiscal year. One of the, one of the actions that we were able to take across the board is to eliminate in fiscal year twenty twenty-one only the purchase of vehicles in heavy rolling stock. And that will be across all operations, including both general government and utility enterprises. We are confident that our fleet can handle this. We are confident that we will be able to do what we need to with respect to maintenance and care of these vehicles. Uh we anticipate that that we'll be able to manage this process for one year and then hopefully be in a better position in fiscal year twenty-two uh to be able to bring those, uh bring those expenditures back into the CIP. This is not an all-inclusive list of projects that are included in the CIP, but these are some significant projects that I felt like needed to be brought forward to you as we foil in this discussion. Uh the largest single expense that we have for general government in our CIP is our resurfacing program. Uh right now, we're anticipating trying to be able to fund uh on an annual basis approximately one point nine million dollars. And we will continue to work to find ways to do more, to do as best we can with respect to its allocation. The administrative complex continuing to improve is, we've obviously have been doing, can work on the first floor. And to continue the planned work on the first floor and seventh floor of the building will cost approximately a million dollars, a million and sixty thousand. C-Max sidewalk improvements, this is a major project that we have benefited now for several years of proceeding. Uh eighty percent of this is funded through the congestion mitigation air quality grant program. And this allows us to be able to extend our sidewalk network uh and service greater parts of the community. And that is approximately around seventy-five thousand. We also have plans for the uh for the redevelopment of our former National Guard Armory, on the Romney Boulevard. Uh the first phase of that would be approximately five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We do also have in here, of course, the uh the desire for the televising and available broadcast of council meetings. The infrastructure needs for this project to start at the first base, which is for the council chamber, is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The neighborhood park renovations, we have been trying to work to do annual, uh to work to try to do as part of implementing elements of the master plan for parks. Uh the renovation of parks on an annual basis, the next one scheduled, I believe, is Meadowbrook Park, Meadowbrook Park. Uh and we've budgeted, appropriated, we budgeted and planned approximately three hundred thousand dollars. We also have two hundred thousand dollars for another that has been discussed to the council, and that is the paving of dirt streets. And obviously, we'll be working with that. Conference and fire station improvements, uh this hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for planning and other activities related to major renovations that will be taken, that will be taken at station two. Uh that we are moving forward with to try and modernize that facility. And then we also have a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the evidence and property management facility for design work. This is a major project that we need to take action on uh in terms of locating our evidence and property management of the police department into a, into a modern facility. From a utility enterprise perspective, the two projects, if you see their list that are in the electric plant, and they have to do with pretty significant pieces of the equipment. Uh the wastewater treatment plant generators, those generators are, I think, I believe, our originals to destruction of wastewater treatment plant and are now beyond useful life. Uh the electric fund will be taking over ownership of those generators and will be installing them uh as part of an agreement with the wastewater uh facility as a customer. Uh the, these generators not only provide backup power, but also can service as peak shading facilities for load management and approximately cost two point three million dollars. The Old Mill Point of Delivery Station is on Old Mill Road, this is our original point of delivery station in the electric system. We have two, uh there are two major transformers at this site that according to now to Duke Energy Progress, we are now needing to replace. The first one of those is scheduled to twenty twenty-one. I believe the second one is scheduled to twenty twenty-four. And the first generator replacement is two point two five million dollars. Next item is the Springfield Road Widening. This is an NCDOT project. However, it is the city's responsibility to pay for relocation of water and sewer lines that occur with an NCDOT road widening project. So our obligation combined for water and sewer is one million dollars. Uh I believe that that project is completed. Johnson Street Pump Station Rehab is another million dollars. This is a situation where this pump station is experiencing increased capacities. And in order to ensure the integrity of the stormwater, sorry, the wastewater system, a, a rehab and upgrading of the capacity of this facility is required. Transmission, I'm sorry, wastewater treatment plant road paving, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The roads, um, as the wastewater treatment plant have not been paved since the original construction facility. And they've been repaid, not, they're still with their original pavement. The pavement is in need of replacement, not just because of the age, but also because of the nature of the nature of the vehicles that are on that, on that road now is much more heavier duty than what was on there before, including several eighteen-wheelers for the, for the peck of a sludge and other, other items. And so that's a necessary repaving project at five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Transmission pole replacement, uh we have done a lot to work on replacing our aged transmission poles in our electric system. These are critical items that need to be replaced on a, on a, on a pre-rigor schedule. We're trying to do our best to continue to move the average age of these poles down as well as go from wooden poles to steel poles. Um downtown drainage improvements, this is the design, this is the completion of design work as well as some other items to initiate a project in stormwater that is a rather significant project. It's the largest product, project we've ever had in a stormwater operation. And as you can see over, when you look at the CIP over the next several years, it's a rather significant investment that we need to make in order to address the underground and above-ground drainage needs of the downtown area. We also have money set aside, and these are annual appropriations that are set aside for the extension of gas mains, uh for new gas mains in existing systems as well as for the expansion of our gas system into unserviced areas, which helps us grow the utility operations. It is the one, it's one of those utilities that we can grow up like the electric operation. Next, uh, final steps that we'll talk about here involve what will be next. And that's really to incorporate what we are proposing into the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which y'all will receive in a couple of weeks. Uh obviously, as we move forward, we will continue to need to do our best to adjust the available revenues, taking into account all the, all the priorities of our annual budget. There may be a need to defer some projects uh that have been listed in the CIP that may have to defer. If we do that, we will explain why as we go forward. As well as we need to make sure that we can assure our debt capacity. It's especially important in the general fund as we continue to work to maintain our bond rating and also continue to be in a position for future, for future development. That's all I have with respect to consideration.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hunter? Uh, Mr. Bullock, Councilman Bullock?
Uh, so, so, uh, I don't know about the rest of the, I don't want to kind of sometimes with empty days, uh, especially because of some of the issues. Five hundred and, uh, three, 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 five, eight, nine.